Hello, Mr. Vendetto and board members. It's good to be back and see you again.
Hey, Robert.
How are you? I just want to say for anybody that doesn't know me, my name is Robert Ripp. I live down in Massapequa. I've come up a couple of times for a while when we were speaking, but I was just have some questions that we discussed last month. I'm not sure what, how you want to, you know, for lack of a better word, I'll say procedure, but I have some questions that I had asked that I hope to get answers to. I have some new questions and then I just have some concerns I'd like to raise with the board, but would you like to start with the remaining questions from last week?
It's a floor question.
All right, thank you. I had asked you last week, the Friends of John Vendetto, I brought your attention, the gentleman, Richard Porcelli, you explained it, you knew him, and I'd asked you, I noticed that the Friends of John Vendetto, I mean, from just reviewing the Schedule Fs that were provided to the New York State Board of Elections, I could see that at the appropriate times, you know, excuse me. What I was curious with there, I just, I'll just forget about that. What I was curious was, I noticed that Schedule Fs show that the Friends of John Vendetto are evidently paying Richard Porcelli from, the address is listed as in Ron Concombre, a thousand dollars a month since February 2013 for storage, and I was just curious, I asked you last meeting, if you could tell me what you were storing and where it was being stored.
Yeah, I will, Rob, but you continue and I will use the same format we've been using. You speak. Oh, I'm sorry.
These are from last week. That's, yeah, I'm sorry.
My fault, my fault, my fault.
Last meeting, not last week.
Yeah, yeah, I apologize for that. You're right, this is an outstanding question. Just two observations real quick. One is, my recollection is that you made a, something of a nature of complaint to the Board of Elections that's going to be looking into all of these matters, but in particular, to answer that one now requested you ask, Mr. Porcelli is storing at his home somewhere around eighteen to twenty years' worth of furniture, signs, campaign materials, and things of that nature. I think at one point, I know his house is on the left renovation, but I think at one point, he was using the entire second floor of his house, if my memory is certainly right. That's basically what I recall about it. So it was the storage of many, many years of campaign materials, including office furniture, old computers, chairs and tables and signs and two-by-eights and four-by-eights or one-by-eight.
This is at the address in Ron Concombre?
It was at the address in Ron Concombre, I believe so, yes.
So, I mean, it's, I'm not just leaving you anything, but, so it sounds like he's using his personal residence for like a commercial storage area?
I don't know if that would be a commercial storage area, he's storing what I just told you.
Okay, thank you. I had asked you another speaker last week, I think his name was Robert Friar. You were pretty adamant about the lack of any termination clause in the contracts with S R B concessions, and I came up and I asked you about that afterwards, and I just want to, just see if you got a chance to think about that, look into that. I just want to make sure that there are no repercussions for the town if Mr. S R B defaults on any of its loans or anything?
Actually, what surprised me of Mr. Friar was his total lack of knowledge. He almost came up, the election was programmed by someone to ask those questions, to someone who's a candidate for the town board, he didn't really seem to know what he was talking about, quite honestly, that's what I recall about it, but that whole issue is a matter that lawyers representing the town are now currently reviewing, but right now, my understanding is that if we were determining those concession agreements, those license agreements, as of right now, we would owe nothing at Tobay, and I'm looking at the town attorney, but we may owe a fixed amount over at the Balfours', but it would be substantially less than the improvements that were made there, you know, over the many years.
Right, and there's no, there's no types of repercussions if there's any defaults on any of S R B's loans?
No, I can just answer the question right there.
Okay. I just had some questions about the landfill, I don't know if you remember any?
No, I really don't, but I remember you brought the topic of the landfill. What's, only question is, as you recall.
Would you mind, I just have an overhead.
I don't mind it.
Picture, thank you, thank you, John, I appreciate it. I have an overhead picture, maybe I could just guess, I'm just curious, what I'm trying to determine is, like, I drew little black lines around, but I'd just like to know the whole parameter of the landfill that was sold.
You mean the perimeter of the property?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if that's correct, what I marked out, maybe you could take a look at it and let me know.
I don't know either, I'm gonna need help from Messers Mayor or else work to oversee that. I guess you're, you're talking about the property that was sold?
Yes, yes. I'm just curious, I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm curious if, if the parts with the buildings, like the highway department and the public safety, the cell phone tower, if all that was included in the sale, which I imagine, I mean, obviously, I went up to the property, but I would never go in the property without permission, it's, you know, it's private property. I'm just curious if, we talked about the conversion plan from the methane gas to the usable fuel for the trucks, I'm just curious if all of that was included in this?
Let me get that off for a second.
Oh, go ahead.
Listen, I'm considering this all material, right? You brought this up last time. I'm considering this as a response to your question.
You know what, to be fair with you, it's kind of two-way, it's all material, but there was something with that.
I want to hit this a little, because we don't have tons of time today, so.
Okay.
Let me, I think there's, I don't want to put too much on your plan. We'll start with defining the perimeter of the land that was sold, but I don't think there's a connection between methane and fuel.
There is not. Let me start with the property, that's real simple.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, I don't mean to insult the aerial, we sold everything.
Okay.
Whatever we owned over there, we sold, okay?
Let me interrupt you, I'm sorry.
My name's Hal.
Hal, I'm sorry, I just slipped my mind, I'm sorry, Hal.
I'm as simple as I can make it to that.
Is it a little platform lines, is that the whole?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do that, okay? I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna stand here at, studying aerial, and I haven't memorized the meets and bounds of the property, and how much simpler than I can make it than to say, everything that the town owns on Miller Place in Syosset, including the office buildings, the old landfill, everything has been sold.
Okay, thanks.
Now.
Okay, you answered the question, that's good.
The second question, if I remembered correctly, had to do with the gas that you were disputing.
But before, oh, let me, let's slow down. Make sure we're talking about the same thing. When the landfill was closed, methane is emitted, am I not correct?
Yes.
And over the course of time, that is monitored, but it dissipates.
Correct.
Okay, I would say, that landfill's been closed about forty years or so, so I would say that, I don't have any doubt of it, but I would assume that there's very little, if any, methane is still being emitted from the site.
Correct, and that which is invented in accordance with all the health regulations.
But that methane has nothing to do with the natural gas.
Correct.
Source that we, that we also tolerate at the property.
The fuel source, I think the term of art is C N D, compressed natural gas, which is what the technical people call that, that is a fuel source that was, John may have some more of the details, but there was a federal grant that funded in large part the partial conversion from gasoline or diesel fuel for the trucks.
So let's start right there. Let's start right there, you have the methane, I think, what you just heard, the comments about.
I'm sorry, from what I understood, and maybe I'm wrong, but from what I understood, it's, well, the town also had a methane recovery plant in Bethpage, right, the landfill, and that produced methane for over twenty years, okay? I was, and I could be wrong, Hal, I was under the impression that the town was recapturing the methane that's produced on this landfill and converting that to usable fuel. Is that wrong?
Correct, yeah, that's wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not my fault, that's wrong. If I didn't explain it more fully enough, what I was trying to say is, I thought I said it clearly, actually, that the methane being admitted there is not being utilized in any manner other than to get rid of it, and I think you made a reference to the natural gas that pursuant to a state grant that are utilizing out of our pumps.
Well, I never, I never mentioned natural gas, I was under the impression, maybe you can explain it to me, that the grant was used to convert the methane, but.
You're wrong.
I know, I know that, I'm not arguing that. What I'm asking you is, I'm sorry, what's being converted there then? What's that, what's, what was the grant used for?
Nothing's, nothing, okay, in the fuel source sense, nothing's being converted. The term conversion and the way we used it was to convert a portion of the fleet from traditional gasoline or diesel fuel to compressed natural gas, which means, as new trucks are purchased, they are trucks that run on a different type of fuel supply than traditional diesel trucks, that also meant that there had to be facilities installed at what we would colloquially call the gas pumps, to allow the trucks to be filled up with compressed natural gas instead of, or if you have your car, traditional gasoline.
Now, I understand, so, so using that compressed gas instead of, like, diesel, that's what was saving the town the 275,000 gallons of fuel a year?
Correct.
Okay, so we sold all that?
Well, we sold all of that, but the closing doesn't take place for several years into the future with what we did on the property when it entered the technical. We've sold the property, gotten most of the money, but have not yet closed on the deal. We allowed, we are allowed to stay and use the property for what was five, now it's down to about three years after that the money transferred, but yes, as of the time we vacate the property, all of the property will go to the purchase.
But, I can't, I can't move it.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, but we're not just.
No, 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 let me, Rob, let me just wrap up.
Are you cutting me off?
No, I'm not cutting you off, I just want to round out the answers here, because we still have the last meeting, and I want to move forward. I think it's pretty clear that we'll ultimately be abandoning the natural gas operation, but I think, Hal, it was a five-year, wasn't it, was it a five-year program, or am I remembering wrong?
Well, you, five years, five years, which, yes.
So which is going to coincide roughly with when we surrender possession of the property.
In the interim that we're getting to use this, the town's not paying rent or anything for that, are they?
No.
You're not.
Can I just ask you one more question? The cell phone tower that's on the, on the property?
Okay.
The town was receiving rent for that, is that correct, or some sort of, some sort of?
Yes.
Oh, the town's no longer re, is the town still getting paid the rent for the use of the cell phone tower?
Yes, it's still, there's an S P A, property, or whatever.
Yes, yes, when we vacate, it's going to go to the new owner, but yes.
Correct.
Thank you very much, thank you. So that's, last question from last meeting.
Okay, I appreciate what you're saying.
Okay, do you want the new questions, or do you want the stated?
It's your public comment period, you make your comments, and if we think it's most appropriate.
Thank you very much. I wanted to ask a question in relation to the special counsel for the Ethics Board that the town, the town passed a resolution to hire. I just want to find out, because personally, I made a ethics complaint back in April, April fifteenth, I haven't heard a word about it, I'd just like to find out if the counsel that was recently hired by the town has got involved, if there's anything going on with it.
We'll get to it when you talk, like you do always, we have a list of questions, so we know it's correct. Go ahead, Robert.
Second question had to do with the specific Resolution 328-215, it's a special counsel for federal litigation, I'd like to know if it's possible who was hired and what exactly they're doing for the town.
Okay, just go slow down a little bit, make sure.
Yeah, no problem. Excuse me for a second. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
I have a third question, there's a number of questions, I guess, in, involved in this, but just before I ask the question, I just need to share a little bit of information so that everybody can understand why I'm asking these questions and what relevancy they'll have.
You don't need to do that, we understand the question.
No, I don't think you'll understand this, I'd like to read it if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so, back in the mid-eighties, there were a couple of employees of the Town of Voice to Bay that were indicted in some sort of bribe plot at the town dump, and it's actually a sixty-six count indictment, and a Joseph Argitorio and a John Lally were charged or indicted for accepting bribes from Causton, among other things. According to a newspaper article done by the New York Times, the Nassau County District Attorney reported that substantial amounts of the money that was received in bribes went to Oyster Bay, the Oyster Bay Republican Committee, and what I'm getting into here is, I was able to discover through some legal documents that there were some allegations involving the Town of Voice to Bay, and there were also some statements made by employees of the Town of Voice to Bay that were involved in this. This gentleman, his name is Peter Stromiello, S T R A M I E L L O. Now, the reason that I found this relevant is when I was reviewing the Friends of John Vendetto's financial statements, the address that's listed is associated with Peter Stromiello. Now, Peter Stromiello made a statement during this investigation, that it says throughout the relevant time periods, Unique Truck slipped the scale and the cubic yardage of roll-offs was reduced by the Scale House employees. Both Nikki Ferendi and her son, whose name I cannot recall, but who I remember had a beard, would meet separately with Vittorio in the back room throughout the relevant time. And then he goes on to explain that the supervisor of the Scale House would give him money that was coming from the Causton, was in return for the Scale House employees, allowing them to be weighed off scale and having their roll-off size on the report, and so, this is information that this gentleman, Peter Stromiello, shared with whatever prosecutors were involved in this case. Now, I also noticed that not only does the Friends of John Vendetto political committee come back to a property owned by that gentleman, but the Friends of John Vendetto also lists in their Schedule Fs that, what I was saying earlier is, I realized that periodically you need to rent storefronts, you're running for election and everything, and that's all listed in the Schedule Fs, but every, every month repeatedly, there are charges listed for utilities, for cablevision, for Toyota vehicle, for some Hartford insurance, and I'm just curious, I'm curious to a number of things, actually, I'd also like to just bring to your attention that there seems to be a number of, Stromiello is currently employed by the Town of Voice to Bay. I don't know if it's the same Peter Stromiello, but there is a Peter Stromiello that works in Department of Public Works, he earns 170,000 dollars a year, there's a Jenny Stromiello that's in youth services, it looks like, and a Tony Stromiello, which are like mid-level 45,000 dollar a year jobs. I'm just, would really like to find out, first of all, I don't, I mean, it's just my own personal, even not even, I guess, opinion, but I'm curious why, if this is the same person that was involved with this bribery stuff, why be affiliated with your political club? And I'd like to know, like, what utilities are being paid month after month, and who's driving the car, and what's being insured? I'm curious to find out if donations might be being used to pay these utilities at the 299 or 290 North Queens, North Queens Avenue in Massapequa. So that's my questions regarding Stromiellos, were you able to?
I can, there's not a whole lot I can help you with here.
Well, I expect you to answer right now, John.
Although, there's one, there's one I could answer very quickly, because it really points out your, you conclude facts, you make conclusions based on facts that are just simply not correct. Really, the premise for a large number of the questions you're asking is based upon what you said. You said, I know periodically you rent a storefront for campaign, that's what you said, periodically you rent a storefront for campaign purposes, and that's not correct. I rent a storefront twelve months a year, and doing it for many, many, many years, and all of those bills that you're seeing, including utilities, including cablevision, including computers, including telephones, are all office at that location.
Would you mind sharing a location with me?
Yeah, it's 838 North Broadway.
In Massapequa, right?
In North Massapequa.
Thanks.
Right there in the file.
And I just want to let you know, I'm not making any accusations, I'm just asking questions, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making any conclusions.
Don't talk over me, I didn't talk over you.
All right, I apologize, I didn't hear you speaking.
You should apologize, you shouldn't talk over me. So your whole premise is that you only rent the storefront periodically, so why are you paying all these bills? Well, you're wrong, we're not renting a storefront periodically, we rent it twelve months a year, all year long, we've been doing it for many, many years, and you say you're not making any allegations, but you are, you are, you're saying, hey, I'm just saying, since you only rent the storefront periodically, that you're paying bills, so maybe you're paying in a 290 or whatever address you get, which happens to be the mailing address of my treasurer, that's where she gets the mail for the, okay? So you build inference on top of inference on top of inference, but your whole foundation is untrue, and it's reckless, it's really reckless to say those things about people without really having done your homework and having your facts right. My children read it, my neighbors read it, residents of the Town of Voice to Bay are hearing it right now.
That's why I'm up here bringing it to your attention.
Right, but you should bring the truth to our attention, not, not.
I agree.
Well, yeah, but you shouldn't come up here and say, well, you periodically rent the headquarters, but checks are being paid all year long, you should have asked.
I am asking, it's what you're doing.
But no, you didn't draw a line, your first question should have been, supervisor, how frequently do you rent your headquarters? See, because once I said to you, we rent it twelve months a year, all year long, I could have answered all these questions of yours, but you do it in a manner that is really calculated to injure reputation, to hurt people, to embarrass people, and, you know what, I think that's all I have to say, so why are you doing this?
Okay, I'm, all I can say is, I, I'm sorry if I can't ask the questions you'd like the way that you'd like me to.
I can say that.
I can only ask them the way that I do.
I never said that, it's not the questions that are the problem, it's the facts upon which you're building inferences.
It's all the question, I'm not.
No, no, no.
I'm not answering, it's all the question.
I'm not going to debate you on it, we all, we all know what you did, you're a smart guy, you know what you did.
Okay, you want, you want to move on to the next question?
Sure, no, I'm ready, move quickly, though, this is where to hurry.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to remark to you that I attended another one of the Landmark Preservation Committees, and again, I was able to, you know, notice that they use the recording device and everything, and I know I brought this up, and this has nothing to do with your question, but I would really like to see that the public portions, the public comments, actually, the whole town meeting may be videotaped and then provided for the residents on the town's website, would be a good idea. I, I'm sorry, but I don't, it's my own personal opinion, but I don't think Ms. Herman's notes suffice for what really goes on.
I would take it under advisement.
Thank you very much. The reason I brought up the Landmark Preservation Committee is, at the last meeting, they were talking about the Oyster Bay Railroad, the building right around the corner here, they're refurbishing it, it sounds like a great idea, but I'm just a little curious, because the gentleman that spoke, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing his name correctly, it's either Speck or Specie, it's S P E C.
Maybe, yeah, maybe John, yeah, I know him.
You know, he runs the museum, seems like a really nice guy, seems like he really into it, but some of the things which scared me was, I noticed that they were able to get this program, well, first of all, he explained.
Scared, scared me, you mean?
What raised my concern?
Oh, okay.
Okay, was that, it seems that this program, well, first of all, it seemed like at the meeting that the pitch was made to do this restoration, and maybe I misunderstood, but I thought that the committee, like, approved everything right there. Maybe they did, maybe they didn't, so that would be a question, I'd like to know if that was approved at the last committee meeting.
Okay, we'll find out.
And then, what I was asking, what I was getting at is that the gentleman, Mr. Spencer, Spees, he provided information that he had received a grant to start the, a grant to fund, to start the construction, but then he explained that the town was going to be donating both labor and financial assistance in the program.
Okay.
So, I kind of think that, I like, for some reason, he wouldn't share the information on who made the grants, but I think that if this is going to become a town-funded project, that the public has a right to know who's initially making the grants to start it, and then, what my concern was, that scared me, so to speak, was, it appears that the gentleman, the people that are going to enter, and to take this rebuilding are still short, like 700,000 dollars in their projected needs to do this thing, so I'm a little bit concerned that, that we don't know where the money to start the project is coming from, we don't, I mean, I don't know, maybe you could explain how much the towns want to put into it, but I would hate to see something like this start and then get stuck halfway through because there's no more funding, so.
Okay, we'll look into it for you.
All right, I'm sorry, I just have to just step away for one second.
Try to, let's pick up the pace, let us be.
Yes, I'll hurry for you. So I'm just going to get to my concern part, if you don't, if you don't mind.
I don't want to, oh, I'm waiting, just move it along a little bit.
I just wanted to, I forwarded everyone an email yesterday, I'm just going to read it to you, because nobody responded to me, I don't know if you got it, I want to make sure you got it.
Yeah.
Dear council persons, please, please forward the attached correspondence and video to Mr. Vendetto. As you are aware, he refuses to allow constituents to email and direct.
See, again, you know, you're way off base on the methane, you're way off.
You're interrupting me, John.
No, 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 but I got a point of information, you're way off base on the methane, you're way off base on the campaign headquarters, I don't preclude residents, but.
I can't email you.
I preclude, I may preclude you from my Facebook page, because I don't want it disrupted with some of that man-mat.
Why can't I email you then?
Excuse me?
Why can't I email you?
I don't know that you can't email me, but I'll find out if you can or can't, but don't make a statement that I don't allow residents to email me.
Or if I say something wrong, you can correct me.
I just didn't.
Okay.
It's the third time.
Listen, I'm not perfect, just like you said, I try my best, just like you try yourself.
You suggested the topics, it's the third time I had to correct you, but go ahead, continue.
I'm going to continue, and before I do, I'm just going to say, I thought that we were going to have uninterrupted conversations, it seems like we're bickering again.
We will, but when there's a point of information, when you start out with stating a fact and then drawing inferences from it, that has to be stopped or be corrected, I'm just telling you that you can't make a statement that residents can't communicate with John Vendetto by email when they all can.
Okay, let me rephrase it, there was once upon a time, I, Robert Ripp, could communicate with John Vendetto by email, and then I had an issue or problem where I can no longer communicate with John Vendetto by email.
Okay, that may or may not be solved by now.
Okay, thanks. All right, so, what I wrote was, each of you have ignored the previous three incidents of town code violations, I have observed perpetuated by Commissioner Frederick Ippolito, I have reported. Consider this a fourth request to investigate the code violations on the property associated with Commissioner Ippolito. Just because you claim to have no jurisdiction to enforce the codes with a summons, and criminal prosecution doesn't prevent you from demanding the commission obey the codes just like everyone else, any resident would have been given the choice to comply with the code or argue their case in court, I'm sure of that. Why do all of you allow Frederick Ippolito to continue to thumb his nose at every resident in the town? Why should you expect anyone to follow the codes if you don't yourself? And then I, I attached a video that I just took yesterday of Commissioner Ippolito's property, which clearly shows a number of commercial vehicles on it, and I attached for your convenience a section of the town code which explains that you're not allowed to park commercial vehicles in a residential district. I understand that, I don't, I don't agree with it, but I understand that it's the town's position that you can't enforce these laws, these codes because of state law, I'm not asking you to enforce the codes. Personally, you are, you are the CEO of the Town of Voice to Bay, you're the man in charge, you could order the commissioner to start following the rules that he enforces, but that's up to you.
Okay, Robert, again, my way of point of information, we're going over old ground, this must be, I lost track of it.
It's not old, it's brand new, I just went by his house yesterday, he's still doing it. Does that mean, does that mean because I reported it three months ago, if he keeps committing a violation, that it's old, it doesn't count?
We're going over old ground in your dialogue with this board, which we both pledged not to do. I lost track of the number of times this has been brought up. The state DOT, you complained to them, they passed upon it, you made a complaint to the town, you made a complaint to the Nassau County District Attorney, this issue has been framed to the Nassau County District Attorney, they are working on it, as I said to you countless times before, let's await their response.
I re-reported it to any necessary entity I thought possible, and just like I just re-reported it to you, again, as long as you know about it, that's all I'm concerned about.
We agreed that we were going to stop wasting time.
I don't think I'm wasting time.
Going over, going over old ground, I lost track of the number of times you brought this topic up, but your comments are duly noted, continue, let's move on, we got to go quickly.
I'm really, I'm concerned about your attitude here, because what you're saying is, if a resident of the town brings something to your, to your attention, there's a condition that they bring to your attention, and the condition. and the condition continues, that the resident should never say anything again because they already brought it to your attention. You're telling me that I'm bringing the same things over and over again? I happen to have, let me finish, John. I happen to have made four allegations now on Commissioner Pibbelyto, four individual separate allegations, four individual separate incidents of me observing these things at his property. It's not like I'm coming to you, excuse me, over and over and saying, hey, you're not doing anything about the thing I told you two weeks ago. I'm telling you new stuff every time I come up here.
Rob, I need you to calm down, you're starting.
Calm, John.
No, you're not, you're starting to get me concerned. But here's what I'm going to say, you have three simple words, asked and answered. I'll add two more words to it, multiple times, that's all I'm saying. You're putting words in my mouth, words I, it's been, what you brought up today has been asked and answered countless times by this board, we're not going to do it anymore, and we'll await the findings of the district attorney, who is in a very good position to investigate this matter and report back, so let's go on to the next topic.
Okay, the last topic is, for the last, I don't know, six months or whatever.
A lot of it, a lot of it.
You know, John, I, I'm worried, maybe you should be a doctor or something. You can tell I'm agitated by the way I look, by my manners. I'm a really short guy.
You look very.
Oh, yeah, I'm really stressed out here.
You are, you're worrying me, but go ahead.
Okay, it might be a good thing. Listen, the last thing I want to speak to you about is, last week, Mrs. Sabalico, last me and Mrs. Sabalico, you finally released the portions of my complaints that you forwarded to the district attorney. Okay, yeah, we're going to talk about it again, John, okay? No, hold on, let me finish, you keep wanting to interrupt me, let me finish.
We're not going to talk about it again.
Well, I'm going to say my piece.
We're not going to talk about it again at the board you discussed, but let's move to it.
Okay. I just can't tell you how disappointed I am in you, all right? You know that I'm retired police officer. We spoke, maybe you don't remember, I explained to you that during the course of my career, I had to make approximately, I don't know, 300, 350 arrests, so at least 300 times I filled out complaint reports, arrest reports.
I've heard about a few.
I, you know, included substantiating documentation, and I think I'm professional at it. I submitted what I felt to be complete complaints to you that would explain my allegations and the documents that would substantiate what I was saying. You swore, or you stated a number of times that pile is high, everything was sent to the DA. The bottom line is, you didn't send everything to the DA. You didn't even send half of the information I gave you to the DA. You took a number of, three or four pieces of paper, the initial letter from each complaint, and you forwarded that to the DA without any substantiating documentation at all. I just want to bring to your attention that, as far as I'm concerned, in that matter with those complaints, you were very clear numerous times that the DA had everything, that the DA was going to look at Robert Ripp's complaints, and the answer's there too by the town of Oyster Bay. Well, the DA could never look at Robert Ripp's complaints because you didn't forward it to the DA. Thank you, John.
Hey, Rob, thank you very much, and calm down, go, relax, enjoy life.
You too, buddy, have a good day. And you could always be my friend on Facebook, it's okay.
What's that?
You said you could always be my friend on Facebook, that would have.
I consider myself, if I'm a non-Facebook, I don't get instructions or overwhelming. Too perfect.